I was diagnosed at 65.
Thirty-seven, earlier than most.
Every nine minutes, someone is diagnosed with Parkinson's disease.
And every one of them can turn to the American Parkinson's Disease Association. Visit APDAParkinson.org to learn more and show your support today.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. So, last February, we brought you a series of service reductions. Since then, we've gone back and kind of rethought everything after, you know, all your comments and all the feedback. So I'm going to take you through the presentation. So, as we said earlier, February, 100% of the service, 100% of the time. We want to, you know, recalibrate everything so we can maintain that level of service. Of course, improve our productivity. When we talk about productivity on a route, we're talking about passengers per mile, passengers per hour, passengers per trip. And of course, minimize impacts to all riders. Before I continue, I just want to acknowledge Rep. Cruz and Rep. Stewart are here tonight with us. Thank you for being here. So meanwhile, we've been trying to recruit drivers, so hire more drivers. While we were in public hearing in February, we were fortunate enough that the starting wage was increased to $25.33 an hour. However, driving onboarding takes about eight or nine weeks. So we are currently onboarding some drivers. And we would like to say that, you know, applications have more than doubled since that started. And of course, we want to reinstate these service levels as soon as the workforce shortage is addressed. So originally, the changes that we presented in February were proposed to start on April 6th. We held 11 public hearings with over 300 attendees, and we received over 100 comments via email and voicemail. Proposed service changes now postponed to June 15th. So this gave us additional time to monitor things, take a relook at what we decided in February, and try to do the best we can to preserve more service. So we still will have canceled service because of this, because we still don't have enough drivers to run the service that was scheduled today. But we plan on putting out real-time notifications to passengers, so at least they'll be notified that that trip might be, you know, canceled unfortunately. So why are we holding these hearings again? It's because what we presented in February isn't exactly what we're doing or presenting tonight. And again, these are proposals that we are going to bring to our Board of Directors. So for example, Route 4, we propose to eliminate it on Sunday. But this change means we're just going to reduce the span of day. So the service will still be there, but it just won't run as long at night. So originally proposed changes like the elimination of QX, if, you know, if we didn't change that, then that stands, you know, that change still is proposed in this scenario. But all the previous testimony and the testimony we're going to hear tonight is going to be in the hands of our board. So overcrowded routes, so service improvements with 51, 54, and 72, and 92, all slated to get a little more frequency on the weekdays. However, 92 we're going to put off to the fall, when the Red Island College goes back to fall classes. And the 95X, so we're actually going to add a stop on 95X to help improve ridership there, connect those folks to CCRI where they can connect to nine other routes. So routes to be discontinued. So these are among the lowest performing, carrying .4 to 5.1 passengers per trip. And just for reference, the R-line carries over 37 passengers per trip. So that's QX, 12X, 59X, 61X, and the 88 Simmonsville Shuttle. 7680, I'll get to those in a minute. So Route 9X, 10X, 23, 68, and 73 are no longer scheduled to be discontinued. Route 7680, we've restructured into a new route. We're going to call it 70. So 70 will originate at the Pawtucket Central Falls train station. It's going to serve Stop and Shop Cottage Street and St. Mary Field Academy. It's going to operate on weekdays and Saturdays. And it'll operate on weekdays from 7:10 to 5:53, and on Saturday, 9:10 to 4:53. And it'll run every 60 minutes. So currently, the 7680 runs every 100 minutes. So this is a lot better frequency. So it'll travel on Walcott, Amistice, Central, and Daggett. So I'm going to take you through the route now. So originating at the Transit Center. It's going to head east. And it'll travel on Walcott. Then it's going to first, it's going to first do Amistice. It's going to be a loop. This route's going to run this way, then up Daggett, back down Central, and serve as Stop and Shop on Cottage, right up here. And it's going to do that in both directions. So it'll go around and it'll serve it again. So, you know, folks that are here and want to get here can ride that trip out. Bus stops will be on this side of the street, that, you know, the east side of the street here and the north side of the street here. So all the stops will be on one side of the street. This is proposed, of course. So segments, these are portions of routes that the bus will turn off and service. So Route 6 Colony House. Route 14, so all service between North Kingston and Route 1 and 138 is going to be moved over to Newport. Route 16, all service between First and Main and Quonset. Route 58, so the commuter trip. So it's a single inbound trip in the morning and an outbound trip in the afternoon that serves out to Middle Spring and 146. And then all service between Newport Transportation Center and CCRI Newport on Route 68. So Route 16, instead of terminating at New England Tech like we proposed in February, we're going to extend that up to First and Main and connect that to East Greenwich, which will connect to the 14 line and residents in that area. Unfortunately, by extending that, it's going to be every 90 minutes instead of every 60, but the service will be preserved. Route 64, we are going to continue to service the Bay Campus and locally on Boston Neck Road. And just be a reduced number of trips. Route 63, so back to 68. So 68's going to be shortened. However, that route serves the north end of Newport. It serves the Gerard Maple Hillside area. So Route 63 already does that as well. So they'll ride 63 to a time connection at the Newport Transportation Center, connecting with Route 68. And that'll get folks to the beaches at DHS, and that'll be seven days a week for them. So weekend service, so Route 18 and Route 64 on Saturdays. Route 58 will continue to have Saturday service. Elimination of Sunday service, so Route 23, Route 4, 16, 69, and 71 will continue to have Sunday service. And in terms of all weekend service, 6 Prairie, 29 CCRI Canemecat, and Route 75 Dexter Lincoln Law on Sunday. Routes 13 and 30 will continue to have weekend service. So decreases in frequency. So this was a way to preserve the service, but still be able to try to retain, you know, get that driver pool built up quickly. So what we're looking at now, so these are frequencies. So Route 6 Prairie will be 30 peak, 60 midday. Route 16 will be every 90 minutes on weekdays, Saturdays and Sundays. Route 18 will go to 60 all day. Route 21 will go from 40 to 50 on weekends. Route 64 will pretty much be reduced to three peak trips. Route 65 will be three peak trips. It'll go down to two peak trips. Route 87 on weekends will go from 40 minutes to every 80 minutes. And Route 95 will go from three peak trips to two peak trips. So while decreasing frequency and availability of, you know, the number of trips we had, you know, we'll still, you know, we'll try to reduce our overall missed service due to the driver shortage. So span, so span of service is the start of the service day to the end of the service day. So we're able to get some savings by doing this, but still having service and not cutting the whole day. So Route 3, on Sunday, it'll go to 9:30 to 4:50. On Route 4 on Sunday, go to 9:20 to 5:00. 13 on the weekends will be 7:30 to 7:30. 16 on the weekday will be 6:30 to 6:30, and weekend will be 6:30 to 7:00. 23 on weekdays will be 8:30 to 5:00. On Saturday, 8:30 to 5:00, and then on Sunday, no service. 71 will go to 8:45 to 5:00. And Route 73 on weekdays will be 8:30 to 4:05. So next steps. We want to take feedback from you all tonight. We're going to bring that to our Board of Directors. Public comment will be accepted through the April 19th tomorrow. And you can do that by emailing us at marketing@ripta.com or dialing 784-9500, extension 1101, and you can leave a voicemail there. And our Board of Directors will vote next week on the 25th, whether or not to accept this proposal. So for public comment, same as last time, for those of you who are here, those of you who weren't here, we like to give everyone a chance to speak, so we try to keep it to three minutes. Comments unrelated to this content, it's not going to be recorded for public testimony. We're here to talk about this specific thing tonight. Again, if you don't want to speak, you could still submit comments in writing, and you can do that here with the forms we have, or you can email marketing@ripta.com. And then of course, copies of our Title VI Safe Analysis are available for you. And our Title VI program is available at ripta.com. And then after we've gotten through public testimony, our staff will be here to take some questions.
Good. All right, so I've got the list of everybody who signed up to speak. We'll go through this list. If anybody didn't sign up, we'll have plenty of time afterwards, after we get through the list, for you to speak if you'd like to. And again, like you said, try to limit to three minutes. I've got a little three-minute timer, just to make sure everybody has a chance to speak. So first on the list is Alice.
Thank you so much for having these meetings. I know we all really appreciate it, and thank you everybody for coming out. So I have attended the February meeting, and I just want to say thank you immensely for not getting rid of completely the 76, which is the bus that I take. I had actually been in an automobile accident that unfortunately left me with some trauma to get back behind the wheel, so that's why I, you know, have to take Ripta. So again, I just want to say thank you for keeping the majority of that group. So I'm here tonight basically to speak about what was on Page 8, which is that small section. It's up in the Meadow Crest area. My understanding, and I don't know if there were other people that are up from that area, but I had asked different bus drivers, both like in the morning and at night. Yeah, that little piece right there. And so, because if, I'll be honest with you, if I was the only person that was affected by eliminating that piece, I wasn't even going to come tonight because I don't, you know, it's not about me, right? So it's not just about me. But I had been hearing from different bus drivers that there are many people that, you know, throughout the entire day, that either get picked up or dropped off in that section. So I don't know if anyone else is here, but I'm here to speak, you know, I'll chat with them if they couldn't make it. Let's see, what else? And the other thing, the other thing was that I know I had mentioned back in February, and I know you had mentioned the R-line, and that that has, I guess, extremely high ridership. If there's anything that can be done to maybe reduce a little bit the R-line, because currently, when I'm waiting for the 76 after work, I notice that there's very, very low ridership towards the end of the day. So, you know, just again, food for thought, whatever it's worth. But thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Daniel?
Yes, so like Alice, I was also here for the February public hearing. And again, I want to thank you for retaining as much of the 76 as you can in terms of service. It's a group that I use a lot, a lot. It's my primary mode of transit. And these days, when I'm going up to college in Boston, hopefully graduating in a couple of weeks' time, it's been one of my ways to get over to the commuter rail to get up to class in time and all that. So it's been an absolute lifesaver. Just a couple of some suggestions, including whether you're going to keep this configuration beyond the emergency. I noticed that the plant first run for the route is about 7:10. The first run that I take is the current first one for the 76. The reason is because of ingrained habit over the decades with Ripta. I always know it's better to show up extremely early rather than late. And it's more so in the case when trying to navigate between the bus and the commuter rail because they operate on different schedules. One possibility that I'm thinking of is whether or not you retain the earlier run, it would be the possibility of coordinating some of the timing of the runs at the, where the bus and train intersect with the commuter rail schedule itself. I know it's on its own pattern with some additional trains that are expressed and all that to get over to Whitford and all that. But that would be one of my suggestions for improvement, to make it smooth. If you're really, after the emergency, if you really want to keep the configuration as is and leave some of the eliminated segments eliminated, to me, that would be a perfect opportunity to, I know you've got something elsewhere in the state, the whole flex zone thing. The eastern Pawtucket has always been, has always had issues with underserved bus routes. So if that's a way to help build up ridership as a feeder for all of them, as well as get people to use transit more, that wouldn't help hurt. The other thing that I know, the other thing is the whole, ever since the 76 has been deinterlinked with the, what used to be called the 1199, I mean, we've, I mean, one of the things that I bitterly miss about the deinterlinking is the loss of Sunday service. If it wouldn't hurt at some point, especially once the emergency is done, to get the Sunday service back, that would be a dream, considering that I would have to, for all sorts of reasons. I can talk about all that after the end of the comment period.
Thank you.
Bruce?
This is my first time here. I've never been to any of these meetings before. And it's kind of taken downtown by the speaker to tell about some of the bus services. They were going to be, the changes, I don't believe, affect me personally for the route because I could, there still be a serve. But as far as the Sunday service of 13, my niece would be affected because she takes the bus to work on Sundays. And as far as the comment about the R-line, I think you guys should do that bus alone because I ride that bus quite frequently. And the later that it runs now, it probably finds you, so.
Thank you.
Jane? Jane who?
You left.
Representative Stewart?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who's here tonight, everyone who joined the February meeting. And I'm very happy to know that Ripta heard the clear message that was sent at the February meeting in Pawtucket, which opposed the cuts. And while I appreciate the effort to reduce the proposed cuts, I still want to go on record as continuing to oppose any of these service cuts. I think that it's still going to hurt overall ridership and the reputation of Ripta as being a viable transportation option. Also, one thing I noticed in this presentation compared to the February one is that there's a little more messaging around the temporary nature of the cuts that you're proposing here. And while I want to be clear again that I still oppose these, if we take Ripta at its word that these are indeed temporary, I would like to see much more information about the plan and the timing that Ripta will use its proposal, if you will, to reinstate the service that's being cut. And I think those kinds of details will at least offer maybe some hope to people that these are indeed going to be temporaries. So I don't know if you have more information about what those proposals for reinstatement look like, but I would suggest that you include that as part of your messaging as well.
Thank you.
Randall?
Hello, my name is Randall Rose. I'm from the Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition. I was also here on last time in Pawtucket hearings in February, just like Representative Stewart and Cruz and some of the others who spoke. And I do want to thank Ripta. Originally, when they announced hearings this month, they didn't announce any in Pawtucket. And after several of us transit advocates complained, they did add this hearing tonight. So it was good that they put this back in because there are a lot of routes that are affected in the Pawtucket area. 71, 73, 75, 76, and 80 are all affected and all have negative impacts. Just want to say, they think our comments are going to be sent to the board. The Ripta Board has very little power. The Ripta Board doesn't control its own funding. The funding is decided by the State House leaders. So the Ripta Board is going to meet a week from today, on Thursday, the 25th, at 1:30 at their headquarters in 269 Melrose Green in Providence. It's an open meeting with public comment. They're going to vote on these service cuts. And I've already seen the documents that are going to be presented to the board. There's a document that's dated April 19th tomorrow, recommending the cuts that you've just seen. So they're not even waiting for the next hearing. They are sending that in. But really, the Ripta Board has no power over this. But they have very little power because they don't control their own budget. They're used to having to follow what State House leaders tell them. And the governor, Governor McKee, sent his representative, he sent his budget director, Brian Daniels, to the finance committees in the State House, saying that he actually thinks the bus service level should be cut. That they, he says that Ripta covers a lot of area, has not many people riding it, so why not cut it and be efficient in terms of money? So that's what he's been saying, not the governor himself, but the governor's representative. So they did put in some cuts in 2022 that they said were temporary. Now they're talking about making some cuts now, which they say are temporary. And in the governor's budget, it says, let's do a study about whether it might be worth it to cut routes more in future years. They are, they are State House leaders who really want to cut this. The way to stop this is not by speaking in this meeting, and not even by speaking at the next Ripta meeting, although that's good. It is good to speak those places. But what really matters most is contacting your representatives, contacting the politicians, telling them they have to fight for Ripta funding because, yeah, there's a driver shortage. The reason the driver shortage is because Ripta doesn't have enough funds to pay the drivers. Because if Ripta has the money, they would pay the drivers enough that they could hire people to run the buses. So the governor's been underfunding Ripta. We have to fight for adequate Ripta funding. And that's one of the things my organization does, Kennedy Plaza Resilience Coalition and several other rider groups. We fight for more Ripta funding. We also fight against this very wasteful project of paying to move the bus hub out of Kennedy Plaza to an expensive new site they don't even know where. So that's what my organization does. You should join either my organization or other rider groups because when you're in an organization, you can naturally be heard at the State House. So please, talk to everybody you know, get them to contact politicians. But I am also encouraging you to join. I have a signup sheet for my organization, and you can also join others as well. So thank you very much. You're the ones who can make a difference, but you've got to talk to your fellow riders and make sure that they get heard at the State House where it matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew? Andrew left. Eric?
Hi, my name's Eric. Randall articulated a lot of what I was thinking, so I'm going to keep this a lot here for the night. But anyway, I came specifically to advocate for weekend service on the 75. I understand, you know, it's a low-performing route, but I guess I'll just do whatever. So when I moved to Lincoln for family reasons, I tried to pick a spot where I could use Ripta as much as possible. I grew up in North Providence. My dad worked at 51 downtown to work every day when I was a kid. So anyway, I moved to a place near Salesville Mill, gave me access to the 53, which has since been eliminated. A 10-minute walk to the 75, and still am, and a 20-minute walk to the 72. Happy to hear that the frequency may be restored on the 51, 54, and 72, which I all ride, unless I drive occasionally. My regular bits to 75. My wife and I share one car, and I try to drive as little as possible. 75 is helpful toward that end, but it could be so much more. I could walk to it in 10 minutes. It'll take me to the train station. I can get to Boston, hop on the R-line, get to Providence. And the other, I took it here to get here tonight, but I'm not going to be able to take it home because it ends at 6:00 PM. So I'm going to have to take the 72 and then walk almost twice as far to get home than I did to get to 75 to get here. But anyway, that's not exactly the point. It'd be great if it ran later. But for weekend service, like the paper says, you know, it's a low-performing route. But anecdotally, when I ride it on the weekends, it's making stops all along. Lausville Ave, Mendham Road, it's picking up people in Ashton and Berkeley and Lausville and Long Dexter Street in Central Falls. People who work during the week and can't, you know, take the time after the bus ends to go up to the mall and do their shopping. And so they use it on the weekends to go there, but without the weekend service, that's not possible. So it eliminates a lifeline for people. And for me personally, you know, I can drive. I'd rather not, but, you know, that's more car trips. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's everybody who signed up to speak. Is there anybody who's not spoken yet that would like to? Go ahead, speak into the recorder, please.
Sure. My name is Pat Ford, and I represent an organization called the Coalition Radio Network. Just a few quick questions. Past attendees will recognize my train of thought here. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the two representatives who are here tonight. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the two representatives who are here tonight. This is their only really week off for the rest of the term in what's going to be a very intensive time period. So, they're showing their commitment to mass transportation by being here on a cold rainy night. Congratulations to the thirty or so of you who managed, despite rugged weather, managed to be here. Now, a couple of quick questions, and there's a point to this. If, let's just say you lived in Pawtucket, you're over in St. Whedon Street, over by Gallego Court. What time would you have to leave to get here? Anyone have an idea?
On Whedon? The seventy-two line? Within thirty, you know, within thirty to forty minutes.
Okay, and what time is that, what time does that line run till? Roughly?
About ten o'clock at night.
Okay, so, it's reasonable to say that depending on where you live, you could get back and forth on a night like this, again, functional on where you live. How many riders are impacted in the greater Pawtucket-Central Falls area by these changes? Any, a ballpark, I'm not looking to hold you to it.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
Thousands? Randall? Where's Randall? The encyclopedia. Yeah, just roughly in the area, how many Ripta riders are there, roughly, in Pawtucket and CF?
I mean, there's thousands every day who ride the bus.
Okay, so, forgive me, I have to say this. In the year 2024, thirty people were able to make it out to this hearing. A few thousand people that are impacted by these changes, read cuts, were not able to make it out. Family obligations, work obligations, inability to get on a bus, school obligations, any one of a million reasons why, and for people who are well-set or people who are trying to get by, it's very difficult to make a meeting like this. I applaud all of you for being here. This message isn't directed at you, but here we are again. I attend about half the hearings. This isn't televised, it's not recorded, it's not livestreamed. In the year 2024, the equipment necessary to perform that function is somewhere in the neighborhood of about seven hundred bucks. I'm doing it. You're telling me that the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority or the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, who literally spends all sorts of money when they want to, can't make it easy for people in this audience to not have to disrupt their lives and participate through the miracle of Zoom, net meeting, whatever? All right, again, present company excluded, it, to me, is highly insulting that, as Randall pointed out so aptly, that a hearing is taking place that is not livestreamed, not broadcast, not recorded, and which will have no possible potential of having any real impact whatsoever on the decision-making process. I think that's called, in common parlance, a sham. And I think it's time for all of you to bring to your management, again, you guys are here doing the work of the Lord, but bring to your management the fact that we realize it's a sham. And the sham needs to end because people are lived experience, directly impacted by this in this community. And the same thing is true around the state. This dog and pony show, again, respecting your participation in it, but this dog and pony show that's directed by senior DOT and Ripta management to make us feel good that we have a say, we don't. And the fact that you're not willing to record the range of human reactions that are involved in here or in other hearings, where you have folks facing a variety of challenges in life, that is part and parcel of any presentation you make or should make to management about the human impact, the real human impact of the changes you're making. And you failed to do so, and I can only assume from your, not you guys, but from your top management, it's either arrogance, ubris, or simply contempt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on the proposed changes? Please take your hand.
I spoke at the last meeting. I sent him an email for this meeting. I found my work at Intepac on the strength. I take the seventies, leave eighty in the morning. I start my day very early. The working day is seven to three thirty. With the bus starting, eliminating Columbus Avenue completely, I have no choice but to go some other way to work. I don't know what you're thinking, starting it later and eliminating all of Columbus.
Appreciate you, man. Thank you.
Yes?
I'm going to try and speak because I lost my voice. So, I just wanted to thank you for the wage raises, for taking comments and thinking about it, but also to just doubling down on, we're not opposing any cuts and hopefully expanding and hearing from others, especially, I remember this works in Intepac, so they hear that working people can get to work. Why some of these cuts really, really, really hurting it? I'm going to fight even harder. So, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and sharing all your different perspectives, but really, I wanted to work with Ripta. I thank you, Randall, like whatever we can do at the State House to make sure that we increase the budget so we can make sure people can keep working, enjoying getting around Rhode Island from any point. So, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anybody else have to speak? Are you taking questions?
Is the door still open?
Yes, absolutely. My name is Timothy Dewitt. This is my first time being at one of these Ripta meetings. I recently just spoke, I talked to my wife. We moved to an area on the Oak Hill side of the neighborhood. And we moved to that area specifically because my wife does not drive. And we want to take advantage of routes like the R-line, for example. I haven't extensively studied the list of the cuts and I don't know exactly to what effect we will be affected by such cuts. But I just know if I were to have moved to a new neighborhood expecting bus service and then be like, oh, it's actually getting cut. For my wife, who needs to get around for like, you know, childcare appointments or just general life of like going to the beach and having fun or grocery shopping or what have you. You know, it's nice to live in a walkable neighborhood, but not everyone has the privilege or luxury to walk where they need to go or bike where they need to go. Some people have disabilities or what have you. So, I think it's very important to maintain service at a minimum. And obviously, like other people like Randall had said, that like if we cut, if we don't have enough drivers, like that is a real shortage, but like we need more money to pay the drivers. Because like if you build it, they will come, is my understanding of everything, bike lanes, what have you. So, if we don't provide alternatives to driving, like we won't reduce traffic and we also, you know, it'll just increase the reliance on cars, which will then reduce our public transportation, which will then increase our reliance on cars. And then it's also like this person over here has trouble getting to work or will have trouble getting to work with their, the cut on the line that they ride. And that is unacceptable, in my opinion, because not everyone can afford to own a car. I can afford to own a car, I drive to work. I would rather not. I'm an electrician, I can't take the public transportation system. But not everyone is an electrician or chooses to do that. And I think that, you know, if you don't want to drive or you can't drive, you shouldn't be forced to drive. And that's what I'd like to say for that. Thank you.
Thanks.
For giving this opportunity to speak.
Anybody else have comments for the public record?
I'll be commenting a little later after I hear from folks who've been sort of synopsed or trained by. Early on, I apologize for being. I would have been here on time except that the R-line doesn't stop at the foot of Smith Hill. Oh, no, the R-line, and we want to make it rapid. We'd knock off at the other bus stop, but between the old State House, between South Court and North Court Streets. The next bus stop should be at the foot of Smith Hill, Smith Street. I don't know, the next bus stop is all the way up to University Heights. Makes no sense. So, I had to go downtown and connect and then come back up. So, I apologize for not getting here in the time you got. And so, I will speak before. Some of which you've heard before, but there is reiterating since it has been covered past.
All right, well, if there's no more comments, that will end our public comment period. Yes?
I don't have a comment, I just have a question. How many beach buses are affected? Will they still be running down to the beach this summer or will they be changing?
So, the same service that's been, you know, in service for the last bunch of years will be there.
So, there's really not many changes that will be made to the beach buses?
No, they only run on Saturdays and Sundays. They don't run on the weekdays.
All right, thanks to everyone for coming out tonight.